Okay. Bring the meeting to order, roll call please. Excuse me? Oh, okay. Oh yeah, sorry. Okay. Flag of the Legion. United States of America, in to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible and literally endless. Okay, now we do the call.
Patterson?
Here.
Henderson here. Conan?
Here.
Graham?
Here.
Selecting.
Here. Approval of agenda is presented, no modifications?
So moved.
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
So moved. Approval of minutes from the October 6th meeting?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Everybody was here last meeting, right?
Um, no.
Everybody but Miss Patti.
There's one excuse.
Said you made the motion through a jury.
Yeah. Yeah.
No, really.
Yeah, so yeah, she's not a voting member, so I was looking for somebody to abstain if they weren't here.
Oh.
I knew somebody wasn't here, but I couldn't remember who.
Okay.
Okay, so we're good. Okay, site plan for 73543 Fulton.
That's me.
That's Mr. Herman?
Yes, sir.
Is that you, sir?
Yes.
You want to introduce yourself?
Yeah, so I'm Joe, I, Joe Herman, and we bought the, that's the old Kraus veterinarian building, red building back there. So we have a durable medical equipment company. We specialize in providing alternatives to pain medication, equipment, so therapeutic wraps that are either electrical or thermal compression. Everything that we're doing out of that building really is building related, so we've got about seven employees that rotate in and out of there, verifying assurances and working accounts receivable and stuff, so the company itself is serving like twelve different states right now. But, you know, and we are, because we're required to by Medicare, we're accredited to see patients there, but we don't really because that's not really the purpose of that, that location. So really it's just an office building, but it does have all the capacity to actually see somebody and give them a wheelchair if that was what our business model was, but that's really not what it is. We're providing the specialty alternative pain product equipment. So mostly, mostly through the mail and our main process is centers in Pittsburgh. So again, it's just an office building for all intents and purposes. I have the paperwork too, in case you need to hand this in.
Paperwork?
Uh, my wife, she, she said, hey Joe, bring this with you, so it's the Village Armita application, paying for building review.
We have that.
Okay.
So, um, but you've, you've given us a, um, a rudimentary site plan, it's on draft paper?
Yeah, we're not, we're gonna change anything.
Under, that may be true, but this doesn't suffice for what we need. So even though you're not changing anything, as you say, um, this needs to be a site plan with setbacks, your driveway, it's a non-conforming usage and we have to talk about your driveway, your parking places you've shown, but there's no dimensions.
Well, I, uh, we'll come next week then, or next, next meeting. We'll go ahead and measure some spaces.
Yeah, so you should be able, I don't know, did, uh, did you get a survey done when you bought the property?
Uh, we had closing, they provided us with it and, uh, as far as.
Use that.
Yeah.
Roll that up, use that, so that's got all the dimensions, it should have a site setbacks for your building. If not, I'm pretty sure, um, Doc Kraus could help you out there.
Yeah, it's, we got it at closing, so I can just bring that next time.
Yeah, so then show that with your parking, show your parking, um, dimensions, kind of where you're gonna come, show your driveway. So there's a lot of stuff that we need that isn't here.
Okay.
So, um, anybody else got anything?
I don't know.
So Dave?
No.
Christie?
Good. What frequency of delivery do you expect? How often will trucks be coming in?
Uh, so UPS probably comes twice a week, I think, uh, you know, that's about it, yeah.
It's not big deliveries of semis?
Oh, no.
Like, I'm not knowing exactly what products we're selling.
Amazon, you know, uh, so yeah, office supplies, because we're not really providing stuff out of there.
It's not.
We're administering, doing administrative work out of the building.
Look, do you define, um, what, what do you call durable?
Durable medical equipment, so durable medical equipment, uh, it varies in, um, I mean, there's, for what we do, there's only two products, right? So there's a, I don't know if any of you guys ever been to physical therapy and had them, you know, put little electrodes up to you and then turn the thing on, you can feel it zapping you a little bit. So we have a portable one of those, about this big, and we mail them to people's houses. And so the whole idea when we're marketing to doctors is tell your patients to reach for this thing before you reach for a bottle of pills. And so it's a pretty cool thing and it's basically a, if your elbow hurts, you put the pads here and turn it on, then you'll feel this instead of feeling the pain in your elbow. You know, so kind of like makes a sensation of tapping. And, uh, that's one of the two products, again, it's only this big, we send it to the mail and we don't actually send it from this location, we distribute it out of our location down in the Pittsburgh area. Uh, the second device is probably the size of a VCR and it has fluid that cycles through at 43 degrees. So say you're all sore and burning up from having surgery, uh, this will cool you off so that you don't have so much pain after surgery. It's acute, acute meaning you just got injured. So the one, the electrical thing is for chronic, meaning long-term pain, and then the cold therapy, cold compression therapy is for acute pain. So those are the two things, but durable medical equipment could mean anything from a hospital bed to a wheelchair to a knee brace, but those are the two things that we do.
So it doesn't have anything to do with marijuana?
Absolutely not, no.
Because there's no provisions for Armita to have any type of marijuana facility or dispense marijuana in Armita?
No, no, we, we're, uh, our whole mission statement is alternative to drugs, so, no.
Because that would, that would, uh, I'm not sure how that would work, but that would be an immediate shutdown.
Okay.
Um, okay, so if you'd come next time with drawings and maybe you could, uh, submit that well prior to the meeting, so we can go over it and kind of make sure it's okay before we go through a meeting and say, hey, you need more information?
Sure.
So, cool, okay. So, sorry we couldn't do something, but.
No, I said, you know, I, I actually, I apologize, we may have done things a little out of order. We didn't realize, uh, when we bought it and closed, that it was not conforming. We assumed just because, you know, it was veterinarian's office before, had people coming in and out of it, and we're doing a lot less coming and going, that it was within the, uh, conforming uses. But yeah, we're happy to, I, I will make sure that we get the stuff that we had at the closing statement, uh, with the dimensions and setbacks and all that to you, well before the next meeting.
Cool.
When is the next meeting?
So it would be, this is November, so it'd be the first Monday in December.
Okay, we'll, we'll do.
Okay, cool.
Thanks.
What's that, the seventh? Okay, so it's the, so it's not the first Monday?
Yeah.
That's first Monday, first Monday is November 7.
Yeah, okay.
It's never first Sunday Tuesday.
Gotcha.
You're welcome to leave, you don't have to sit there through the whole meeting.
Yeah, unless you want to.
No, I'll head out. You guys have a good night, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Herman. Okay. So, when, when's our public hearing?
7:40, so you're okay.
Excuse me?
7:40, so you're okay.
Okay, 7:40, so, um, we'll enter into the public hearing for.
A motion.
Need a motion? The entrance of public hearing for 74130 Fulton?
I'll sort move.
Second?
I'll second.
On favor?
Aye.
Aye, so moved, okay. So any comments from the audience on the special approval land use? Hearing none?
Motion to close.
What's that?
Motion to close.
Yeah, so, motion to close?
I'll second.
Favor, or?
No.
Second?
I'll second it.
All favor?
Aye.
So moved. That was about the facet public hearing we had. Okay, so, um, Mr. Ezo, did you get the memorandum from McKenna?
Yep.
Okay.
I don't know that I understood it 100%, but I'm pretty sure I did.
Okay. So what do you think you understood?
Um, that, that building don't belong where it sits, uh, but because it does, I gotta make the best of it. Uh, and so I'm sure that there are some written in stone, uh, ordinances or rules or codes that, uh, that building is just gonna disqualify what we're trying to do. But that's always been with that building, uh, and what we're doing with that building is what we've been doing with that building for 35 some odd years. Anyway, and, uh, I'm concerned as always about some of the things that a village planning commission is really set up for, to make sure that there is no noise that's gonna bother anybody, which there isn't. There's no smell coming from the building that's gonna bother anybody, which there isn't. And, uh, uh, I can't really think of anything else. Uh, the, nobody knows or cares what's happening in that building if you stand there on the sidewalk and watch the cars go by and the people go by and the people in the back. In fact, if anything, they care that they're, they need to use my property. I've got two overhead doors from two buildings that open up onto my property. Uh, I don't, I'm a team player, so for 35 years I've just had a happy face and let them do what? Because I didn't need all the, the land. Uh, parking, I know you said one time, uh, just recently, that our guys are parking on public parking. Well, I went and found out, no, not really, there's a guy that was halfway on it, but that was because there were two abandoned cars on my property from, I have no idea where they came from, they're not ours. So, uh, the village uses my property all the time. The waitresses park there, uh, the tenants and above the, the rentals, uh, they sometimes park there. Uh, if anything, I'm the one that's allowing them to use my property and they notice it. They will definitely notice it if I don't allow that. But the reverse is, they don't notice anything about, uh, my activities because we're not, uh, attracting attention. We're not really doing anything that is, uh, I think objectionable. That's pretty much it.
Okay, so, just to kind of go back over your statement, um, you haven't had a welding fab shop in your business in your building for 35 years. So that's been a recent thing, um, you've been operating without an approval, so you have been operating for a few months, uh, maybe six months. I don't, I don't know what your timeframe is, but that's a far cry from 35 years. The second thing that we have to discuss and clarify is the, um, the memorandum put forth by Mr. Casey, and I'm gonna turn it over to, uh, Mr. Casey to explain what he's come up with.
Okay, sure. So, uh, as noted in that review, we've got a couple of things to consider, the first being the use. Uh, and, uh, as I know, there are a few standards specifically for the compatibility with adjacent uses. Uh, and the first standard is that, uh, this type of use, as it's classified by the ordinance, can't be within 500 feet of a residential district or use, which it is. Uh, so that's one thing that really can't be remedied just based on the location. Uh, the second is regards to screening. Uh, you do propose a six-foot-tall privacy fence, the ordinance calls for a bit more of a, a screening strip and it can be either planted or, uh, by a six-foot-tall masonry fence. Um, there are some other things that we just don't know based on the information that you've provided so far, um, in terms of an impact assessment that's required. Um, you know, we do have your hours of operation and the anticipated traffic and, and delivery method and things like that. Um, but that impact assessment requirement calls for a qualified preparer, an environmental impact study, um, impacts on public facilities and, and services. Now, some of these things won't apply to the use, but, uh, but I do think some of them would. Um, and then the performance standards of the ordinance, the one that I hit on in the review is that industrial sound is not permitted to exceed 70 decibels. Uh, we don't, we just don't have specific documented information provided as part of the application for that. So it's hard to, uh, hard to make a determination on sound. Uh, and then the last statement that I want to go over is, and it ties into the village's master plan, is that, um, typically industrial uses are not well-suited next to residential properties, um, and they're not, uh, typically considered desirable buffers between residential property and commercial property. Uh, you, uh, from a planning perspective, you like to see things like retail or office or restaurants or those types of uses as that buffer. Uh, and then we note, uh, in terms of the site plan requirements, these are things I think could be remedied if, uh, if you chose to provide the information. Um, things like, uh, the location of dumpster screening, um, a photometric plan for lighting on the building, um, architectural elevations, things like those that, um, you know, it's an existing building, so we know that some of that is already there, uh, but they are, there are pieces of information that could help provide a better picture of what the operation is, is going to look like. Uh, and then we had some specific comments on the parking layout. We think that one of the parking spaces is, um, potentially unusable just based on getting a vehicle out of there. Uh, and then we wanted some clarification on whether there is permission from the village to utilize, uh, the driveway there as a through access. Uh, and then we also noted that outdoor storage is not mentioned in the application materials, but it's typical of this type of use. Uh, so we think that it's, uh, it's wise to discuss that at least at the planning commission level. Uh, but we do note that the ordinance wouldn't permit outdoor storage for industrial uses on this site. So, um, given the, the, we do think that you could provide some additional information that might suffice to achieve the site plan review criteria. Uh, but the use specifically in the ordinance, uh, it's just the wrong spot based on that 500-foot separation. And so on both of the, both the special land use and the site plan, uh, we are recommending denial, that it does not achieve the standards of the ordinance.
No, I, I, and I, I knew that, uh, from the get-go, that, and it's not the first time that building's been rejected for a use. Uh, like I said, when I bought that building, I bought an industrial building, okay? I bought a building that was owned by Armita Oil and Gas Company, uh, they, I didn't buy it from them, I bought it from the person that bought it from them. But, uh, nothing, no activity had taken place. The last activity that took place in that building was industrial, okay? It was, uh, oil trucks that, and storage of oil and containers and, uh, uh, even if you just look at the architecture of the building, the building does not look presidential, it does not look even commercial. It looks like a bonafide, dyed-in-the-wool industrial building, and that's what I ended up with. And, uh, the concerns that you brought up, the end result is, if there's no noise that comes from it that offends anybody, if there's no smells that offend anybody, and if I talk to the neighbor and the neighbor is happy, uh, and has no complaints, and we have talked with her on several occasions, very nice lady, uh, and previous to that, I know all about the house she's in. Uh, my mother-in-law lived there for 20 years, I've cut the grass there many times. I know the relationship between that house and that building, and we do not bother that built, that house, uh, at all. I do wanna make mention one little thing, I don't know that it's even important, but you made mention in here that our front driveway butts up to a residential home, and it doesn't, it butts up to another commercial house or another commercial building. It's small, but our driveway does not touch her, uh, uh, her land. It, it touches this, uh, uh, commercial little tiny, and, and for the world, nobody in this village knows how that was able to be separated from that house, but it is. And all the other things that you, that you addressed, I could take them one at a time, you know? I mean, this, this thing about noise, uh, nothing was provided because nobody has a decibel meter. Uh, and if they did, you know, I mean, and nobody's ever asked anyway. Uh, I also, now that I'm thinking of it, when I bought the building, the industrial building, uh, my activity in there was industrial. We had a big printing press, we had big bindery equipment, we had, uh, made all kinds of noise, way more noise than what we're making right now. The folding machine, when that thing's going, you could, you could hear it, uh, all the way to the gas station. Uh, nobody cared, uh, but this is much less noise than that was. And I did that at that location for 25 years. So I guess my end result is, is that if nothing happens and we all go about doing our business as normal, nobody's gonna know anything changed there. There's, there's nothing that, uh, uh, outwardly gets people saying, what the heck is going on there now? It, it's nothing. There's, there's no change, uh, in, in smell, in noise. Uh, there might be change in activity because the activity, that building goes from being used to being not used, to being used to being not used. Uh, and that, uh, might be what some people might notice, like the waitresses that wanna park in my property, well now, they, they gotta park in a different spot, or something like that. The, uh, the guy that, the two people that have, uh, overhead doors that come onto my property, they may or may not be able to, uh, uh, use the overhead door exactly when they want because maybe we're using our property, okay? But so far that hasn't happened, and like I said, I'm a team player, I've done this for years with the village, uh, and, uh, there's never, never an issue. If you can try to make an issue, I'm willing to hear it, but I just, uh, for the life of me can't, uh, uh, it, can't think of one, other than the ones that you stated, you know, the thing just don't, it's 500 feet, uh, the thing. Those sorts of things are just never going to, uh, it, never, I'm never gonna be able to, uh, to remedy that. But, that building, I let other people rent out from time to time, the, the floor space, and it's, it's just not a good situation for me. Because I can have renters, but the renters are usually there only a couple years, maybe three, and then they end up owing me a bunch of money when they leave, and then you gotta wait four months, six months to get it all rented and go through the motion all over again. There's, there's a huge gap of that building being non, uh, usable, uh, for various reasons. Uh, if you do not just throw a sign out and somebody rents it, and then they, they reliably pay the rent, and the other thing about the rent is, I can't get the going rate. What is the going rate for Northern Macomb County for rent for a building like that, square foot-wise? You'll probably find that I'm charging about less than half of what the going rate in Northern Macomb County is. So these, all these little things, I am considering to, uh, uh, and I said, the best thing for me to do is to, to use it myself, to become, when this opportunity came, to become a, uh, have some sort of a partnership of sorts and, and make money that way as opposed to putting a for rent sign on it and renting it out and going through, like I said, the motion of, uh, of, uh, of failing to pay the rent and then going out of business and yada, yada. The guy right now, and I'm sure you're probably gonna complain about him because he is renting my front space, if, and he was supposed to be gone months ago. And that's putting a cramp in our style because, uh, we, we're pressed for, for space right now. If he's out of there, it, we're, we're, uh, we're able to function better.
Okay, Mr. Ezo, um, we can sympathize with your plight as far as your renting of your building, but that is really not the planning commission's issue. Planning commission's issue is zoning, what fits in the zoning, uh, district and what is allowed right off the bat, what can be worked, the give and take, um, through the special approval land, uh, use process. But your welding fab shop is a, basically, even though it could be considered a light fab shop, which I, I don't really know what you do, but that's a heavy industrial, that's not a light industrial, welding fab is heavy industrial. You've got big machines, you've got big trucks coming in, you said you only have a small truck, but your field deliveries are semi-trucks.
I didn't say we only have a small truck.
Well, the, the paperwork tells us that it's only a small truck.
We have a small truck.
But your, your deliveries are large trucks.
Yeah, I get you, I get you, yeah.
So that's, that's not in your paperwork, but we know that. So, and there's outside, there's, with a steel fab shop, that's why you need to be in industrial area, because there's outside activity. The outside activity is steel storage, the outside activity is completed products, products coming in and unloading and loading stuff. So there's a lot of stuff that happens outside of the building in a steel fab shop. Uh, during the summer you have a noise thing, so you said there's, there's not very much noise, but press brake and a shear, uh, grinders all make a lot of noise. And it's just not conducive to that area that you're in. So there's a lot of things that that could be conducive to, this just isn't one of those.
No, again, I disagree that we're making all this noise that you're talking about. Even in the summertime with the doors up, I don't think that we are making, uh, any more noise than what I've already described without a decibel meter, okay? Uh, as far as, uh, storing, as you call it, uh, things outside, we don't have any intention of storing anything outside, okay? Uh, as I said before. Uh, as I said before, we, uh, right now have somebody in the front that is using space that we wanna use. And it's probably, the last time I talked to him in a month, less than a month, he's gonna be out of there and we'll be able to use that space. We'll be, we'll have, uh, self-contained indoors. Uh, this grinder thing and all these noises you're talking about, I'm there every day. I don't, I don't hear these big, big noises. The, the press brake does not go eight hours a day. Doesn't even go, uh, three times a month sometimes. Uh, it, the neighbor, we've had months and months of her being able to say, "This is noisy." In fact, we flat-out asked her, "Are we making any noise? Are we bothering you? Everything's fine." So I don't know, uh, I don't know what to say other than that building is being used, uh, the same way, maybe not for the specific same duties, but it's being used in the same way as it pretty much always has.
Well, we're gonna differ on that, differ on that statement. But the thing about your neighbor, it doesn't matter if your neighbor is today because that person can move out of there next month, could move out of there next week. So it really isn't that person, it's what the zoning is. So if that business is, hopefully, if, if that, if it was approved, that business could be there 10 or 20 years. Quite possibly could have five different, or more or less different people living in that house. So.
True.
It isn't really who lives there today. It's all about zoning, what's, what's allowed and whatnot.
Exactly, no, I understand that.
What a nice guy you are, or what this, what this is, or what this is.
I understand.
It's really, it's all boils down to zoning.
I understand that. And it all, and furthermore, you can have five, 10, 15 other people move into that house and none of them are gonna smell anything. None of them are gonna really hear any objectionable noises. Man, I was there working today while they were in there. I didn't hear anything. And I'm standing just on the other side of the cinder block wall, let alone in the middle of the, the next yard. Uh, it, it's just not, uh, the things that you're trying to protect the residents from are just not present.
Okay, so you're not utilizing the whole building now, correct?
Pretty mu, well, because, because Dean is in the front.
Just go yes or no.
Yeah.
So are you utilizing all your building now?
I always utilize all my building.
So with these, this new enterprise, with the welding fab shop, is it utilizing the whole building?
Pretty much.
No, it's not. It's not utilizing where Display Mix is, correct?
Right.
So it's not utilizing.
Right, but that's in my request.
Understood, just, we're trying to get somewhere.
Okay.
So that means that your business is gonna expand once Display Mix, uh, vacates.
Yeah.
So with the expansion, then you're also gonna have more employees. You're gonna have more noise. And maybe you're gonna get into something different. Fab shops predominantly don't stay doing the same thing over the course of their tenure. You switch over. You're whatever, you have this customer this year and another customer the next year. So it's not really just what you're doing today. It's what you could possibly do tomorrow.
True.
So that being said, that's why we go by zoning and not just by what is happening today.
Right.
So you're saying that you don't get, your, your machine doesn't use, get used too much. Once you have full use of that whole building, you have more employees, it'll get used more. You'll have more steel trucks coming in. The reason for the whole, this, this thing about the zoning is to keep things so that they're in, they, coming out here, Brian, uh, so that they flow.
Right, no, no, and I understand that things can, can expand and things can change. Sure, I understand that. Uh, but as I said before, the building is an industrial building, was used as an industrial building. My activity there was industrial. Uh, the, the previous owner built the building and used it as industrial. And because it's set right next to, I mean, this is, we're not talking about new construction, okay?
No, we're not. But we're also not talking about 1970 when that building was built. We're talking about 2020. So things have changed in that amount of time. And the ordinances have changed. We're talking about what is today, not what was 40 years ago or 50 years ago.
Right, right.
When that building was built.
Right, but I am also talking about the activity that has been taking place there ever since I bought the thing
But it was never a welding fab shop.
In 1984.
There was never a welding fab shop.
I'm talking about the noise level and the smell level, and that's really what it boils down to.
No, it boils down to the zoning, which is kind of key. I'm coming back to that, the zoning. The zoning in welding fab shop do not go hand in hand.
But I'm saying my, my other activities probably also would not have qualified for that. The only reason.
We're talking about today.
Well, but what I am saying is, uh, well, what I'm saying is the, uh, I have been in there ever since. I do not check, when, when does my, uh, when does my, uh, zoning change for me? Why, why is Park Electric, for instance? Why, when were they, it's today, 2020. Why are they still doing what they're doing? I heard that if it wasn't for being grandfathered, they would be gone. You would kick them out. That's what I heard.
You can't kick somebody out that's grandfathered in. But if their building was vacated and somebody else tried to come in there, you're correct, they could not come in.
Right. Now, when did I end up not being industrial? When I bought the building, it was.
Wait a minute, what did I just say? If Park Electric closed and they vacated that building.
Right.
Somebody else could not come in.
Right.
And do what they're doing.
Right.
So that just negated your question.
Hmm, I don't know.
As it does it. Because Park is currently operating.
Right.
If they quit, quit operating, discontinued operating.
Exactly.
Nobody else could come in there. We didn't have a welding fab shop, so we're not really talking about apples for apples.
No.
We're not.
No, I, I.
So your question really doesn't, there, there really isn't a question. So help me out, Brian.
The reality is, any change of use, whether you're, whether you're going from printing to a welding shop or whether you're going from a printer to a flower shop, any change of use triggers compliance with the ordinance at that point in time. And whether the impacts are, are different or not, that's, that's a separate question really. But you're asking why you're not considered a continuation of your existing use before, and that's why you get triggered every single time.
What I'm asking is why, when I bought an industrial building, why it's not industrial today? It's the same owner. I didn't move out, like, we tried to talk about Park Electric moving out and then everything changes. Park Electric's still there. I'm still there.
Your usage is not maintained, not the same.
It's, it's industrial.
Your usage, it doesn't matter. So if there was a, a, a heavy mechanic shop in there, which there was, and they were a special approval and they were approved, and that was, uh, and then there was other shops in there and they were all approved, but it was a different usage every time. Every time they had to come before planning, correct?
They did, but I'm the.
Wait a minute, wait a minute. Yes or no?
Yes, yes, they did because you asked.
Every time, it's a different scenario. Every time, it's a different scenario. You go by updated standards.
I agree.
Okay.
Because you, because you asked them.
So you agree that we go by updated standards every time we come in? So we forget about 1980, 1970, 1990, 2000, 2010. We, we are focused on 2020.
Um, yeah.
We're focused on today.
I would, I would, well, I, I wanna move past that for right now because I, I do have a disagreement about, about who it is that was getting approval for the different uses. I, me and my building was industrial from the get-go. I'm the same owner. I was still doing, uh, multiple activities in there. I don't know that every time I decide to, to do a different activity, I have to go and, uh, and get approval. Uh, it's the same, if, if it's approved for industrial, then that's about, that's about as, uh, stringent of requirements as you can get. And, and I had it, but I.
We say that industrial should be in an industrial area. So that you have industrial usage in a non-industrial area.
Well, anyway, I'm trying not to get in the weeds here on this and I'm hoping that it's not going to penalize me, uh, this little talk because I feel that this building and this use that we're doing right now, uh, I don't know that you're, I don't know that if we all of a sudden start expanding like you're saying and making all these noises and making all this, uh, additional employees and additional parking, that would seem to me that I'm already then violating something that would bring me back in here talking to you. I'm here today talking to you that I want approval for doing what we're doing now and what we've been, what I've been doing for 35 years. And I know you're gonna say it's not a fab shop. No, it's not a fab shop for 35 years. But it was industrial and we were making noise and we were doing these things. And, uh, we did just fine. And, uh, even, even these last several months, the activities we're doing generated zero complaints from the neighbor, zero, uh, from other outside, across the street or pedestrians or anything like that. We're the same building that we've always been for 35 years, no matter what it is that we're doing on the inside, which you say a fab shop is different than, uh, a print shop with big presses. But they're all still classified as industrial use.
Every last one of them, though, within the ordinance, whether it's a print shop, whether it's a woodworking shop, manufacturer, they're all special uses. They're all gonna, no matter what you do in that building because it's, when you look at the way that the ordinance is set up and the, and the village has planned for the long haul on that.
Which I have an issue with, by the way.
Well.
I'd like to talk about that, too.
Yeah. Uh, regardless, it's all saying any use on that piece of property should be trending towards a commercial use or something along those lines.
Yeah.
And so when you go through the review process every time, it should be, to your point, it should be getting less impactful and it should be, be furthering the vision of, of the village. And that's ultimately what the ordinance is trying to do, is trying to push uses and uses of property and, and the buildings themselves towards that vision.
Exactly. No, I, I understand that. I understand it. But like, I, I don't wanna get into my speech again about being a good neighbor and a team player and there's been no problem with me being there or anything else. A lot of this problem is, is theoretical or invented. Uh, and like I said, I think that to bring up or to address Ben Deleke's, uh, concerns about, well, once I'm in there, I could, uh, we could get a whole bunch more customers and a whole bunch more employees. No, you can't because my, my, uh, I would run out of parking. I would run out of, uh, I would change to the point that I, somebody would come down on me and say, "You can't do that. You're, you're spilling out into the, uh, the surrounding area with, uh, with people wanting to park and, and noises. We're hearing noises and we're smelling things." No, none of that is happening or is gonna happen. And if it did, I'm sure that somebody from the village would then say, "Haul me right back in here." That's what I'm thinking. I don't know if it's true. I wanna address really quickly this vision that the village has for the town, which, and my building. Uh, because I offered, I even offered to you. I says, "Hey, uh, village wanna buy my building?" You know? Uh, buy it, you, you can expand, do your vision thing there, uh, make parking. If, if you expand the township or the downtown, you're gonna need parking. You ain't, you're already maxed out on your parking. Um, you're gonna need that. But no, no, there's no takers. He said, "No, I don't think the village is gonna need it and it's probably true they're not gonna want it." But, uh, I offered it and they didn't want it. The other thing is, is that I don't know if people keep forgetting that, and I mentioned it in the first meeting, real estate is dead. Uh, a commercial office is going down. Uh, a lot of people are working from home and not just because of the virus. They're gonna be working at home permanently. This is, that's the trend. The trend is Amazon. The trend is not neat little shops like Frankenmuth people are gonna walk around in and support. These businesses that are trying to sell something other than maybe a hairstylist or a restaurant, uh, they struggle. And, and I have no idea how some of them, uh, operate here on, on Main Street. But, but my point is, is maybe you should be less thinking about expanding your Frankenmuth, uh, vision of Armada and get more realistic. And realistically, my use of the building is profiting me and it's not harming anybody and it's not hurting anybody. And if Ben Deleke says that, "Yeah, but once you're in, you can..." I don't know what he thinks I'm gonna do, build two or three floors going up or, uh, or, uh, or what. But I don't see how I can then all of a sudden start to take on things that we just don't have the ability to do inside that building. Uh, I know somebody's gonna get teed off and I'm gonna end up in trouble somewhere somehow and I don't think they're gonna allow me to do it. But I'm here today asking to do what we're doing today, right now. That's what I'm here for. And we've been doing it for months. We've got a happy neighbor. We've got, uh, no sound, no noise, no smell coming. Uh, and that's what I'm hoping I'm going to be approved for.
So you said you've been in there for months and, and you have and full well knowing that you should've come to planning before. So you've been operating illegally and you know that. So we should've had this discussion before you started operating. So if I can give you, I let you speak. So if I can give you, for instance, you say that your building, since your building is there and you've been there forever, you should be allowed to do whatever you wanna do. That's basically what you said. But if I can give you, for instance, the C1 district, which is downtown, the main downtown block, could be owned, uh, the, the building could be owned by an entity which does not operate the business at all. But every time that business changes hands, whether it's the owner or it's a renter, they have to come before planning. So it doesn't matter what was there yesterday. It doesn't matter what's gonna be there today. It just matters if it fits the zoning. So again, it doesn't matter if you've been in your building for 40 years or 35 years. It's whatever comes before planning today and that's the decision that you make based on the current ordinance. And that's where we are today. Past history is past history. Today is today. There was never a zoning, a welding fab shop in that building. So we have to kinda get that straight. That had never operated there. That's a different thing. You said you're not gonna expand. Any business that starts today and doesn't want to expand is a dead business. Every, every business wants to expand. Every business wants to make more money. Every business wants to grow. To say that, I don't know where you're coming from. So that's where I said something about growth. So you're gonna, you're gonna, you're gonna start utilizing more of your building. And I've already said I'm not gonna repeat myself. But the reason that you're here isn't not being persecuted, it's to abide by the ordinance that are. It's to abide by the ordinance that are written forth in the zoning ordinance and the master plan of the village of Armada.
Okay. All right. The, I had a few things I was gonna say, but now I forgot them. But, oh yeah, this idea that, that.
Do you understand what I said about the difference? About every time somebody came in, every time a business went out? Let's say there was a floor shop downtown. The floor shop went out and now a photo shop went in. And then the photo shop went in and they both came into planning and got approved, operated their business for whatever time. Then the floor shop went out. The photography place came in, got an approval, operated for a while, quit. Now an antique store went in there. Then they got an approval. And then they left. And we're all talking about the same building. So with all this usage, but every time a new tenant or new owner comes market, doesn't matter if it's the same owner or not, it's the usage of that building. So we're talking about a new usage of your building.
I'm.
It doesn't matter. It's a new usage. It's a welding fab shop. It doesn't matter that you've been in the building for so many years. This is a new usage.
Okay, I guess.
Has the welding shop been in there for 35 years?
No.
Okay. So this is a new usage.
Okay. Yeah. I guess I'm gonna not talk about that anymore. I might have to save it for, for future. If there, if there is a reason that I need to use it for future, I am gonna wanna get more specific on how you say that. Because being, being the owner and being, having the activity in the building and being the owner of it rather than an absentee landlord or something, to me, I think is totally different. And usage, you tend to use the word usage. You interchange usage and activity. And I, I do think there is a difference between them. But I'm gonna, I don't wanna, I wanna move forward and see, see where we go with this. Because I think that even with all of your points and all of your arguments, that there is still power in the village, in the planning commission to say, yes, we know that this should not be like this. This is an old town. It's, the building don't belong there. This is not new construction. We're going to, based on your history, based on your 35 years and how much pain in the rear you've been here or lack thereof, we're gonna say, you know, we're going to allow this. But should this expand to you can't find parking for your employees? You can't find places to do what you need to do because you don't have the room or the capacity in the building? Then we're gonna need to talk and we're gonna drag you back in. That's what I'm hoping says. I don't know if it's going to be true, but that's what I'm hoping is going to happen. And I'm pretty sure that you have that power within you to do that.
Could I ask a question, please?
Oh, sure. Please jump in.
Cause it's kinda going back and forth. My question is, is there, is there anything he can do under his current operation to get a special land use approval? Or is it just, no, because of this activity that's more heavy industrial as opposed to light? No, you cannot get it. I mean, is there something he can do to get it? Because if there's not, then this going back and forth won't do any good.
Understood.
As long as it falls into that, the list of, I'm sorry, the light industrial activities, he would still have to meet that 500-foot separation.
Hey, now, we had the, we sent letters out to all the neighbors. Did we get any, anything back? We had the, the public hearing to see if anybody that's affected had anything to say about it and we didn't get any attendance. So, of course, we can't get, you only got the 300 feet. You're not gonna get 500, correct?
No, 300 feet is the mailing for the public hearing.
Okay.
The 500 feet is the ordinance. So there's a spot in the ordinance, so our ordinance is a little bit confusing. In one spot in the ordinance, it says that this is not allowed, period.
Well.
And then in another spot, it says that is allowed under special approval bandwidth. The big thing with a welding fab shop, it doesn't happen inside the four walls. A lot of activity is outside the four walls. So Mr. Ezzo said that he had two overhead doors. He actually has four. He says there's no outside storage. He actually does. I pictured that.
Again, my question is, does this just exclude him from the special use land approval? If that's the case, that's what we should be telling him.
That, that's gonna be by a vote of the board. So it's your vote, everybody else's vote. So did that kinda explain stuff fairly good? Is it illustration of the C1?
Those buildings are warehouses.
Did that kinda?
To store stuff for Armada oil and gas.
I mean, I, I think it's.
What's that?
That must be a warehouse. I know all tank homes have a duty, but that's.
And repair. They repaired, there is a hoist in there or was in there. They repaired and maintained their fleet of oil trucks. And they stored and had warehousing for.
Much we've had that kind of activity in there since too.
Yeah, but that's not, that's not commercial. And that's, that's industrial. But, but anyway, so, this, I, you keep going to this, well, our ordinance says this. Well, who wrote, who, who wrote the ordinance? Whoever wrote the ordinance can say, well, I'll make an exception.
No, you can't.
Why not?
Because you can't. Once it's written, the only way you can change the ordinance is to have a big lengthy deal where you have public hearings, use all kinds of stuff to change ordinance. You can't just willy-nilly change ordinance.
No, 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 not, not change the ordinance.
To deviate from the ordinance.
Not change it, change it specifically.
Understood. So change it, period. Whether, any change to the ordinance has to be done over a long period of time. So it's a lengthy process. It isn't something that we can arbitrarily do.
I, well, okay, I, there have been other things in that building that I could not do because of the ordinance. And yet I got approved because that building is where it is.
That's incorrect.
Well, that, that's.
Okay, so is there?
There's one point I wanna address. This kinda touches into with the McKenna memo. And going through the applicant's application, part of it, the proposed uses for powder coating. And reading the description, I'm getting some contradictory information. They're saying about EPA concerns. Speaking of actual powder coating, every source I contacted declared to be very friendly to the, for the environment. When I read the MSDS sheet on the very last page, Regulatory Information, Section 15, it says right there at the very top, this product is considered hazardous under OSHA Hazard Communication Standards. And then I started going through some of the compounds that make up the information that's on the MSDS sheet. And everything over here is listed as poisonous or poisonous gas.
Yeah, I wouldn't sniff it if I was you.
No, I'm not recommending sniffing it. But what I'm also pointing out is you have residential in very close proximity to your place of business, which I have some very serious concerns over. Especially given the fact that part of the ordinances also talk about the village's capability to handle any emergencies should they arise. And given the fact that you do have a large number of residential homes in the area, I do have some serious concerns whether or not the fire department would be able to handle if there was a major problem.
Yeah, you're, you are, I congratulate you on your research and all that, but I think you have over-exaggerated it. We are, we do not have robots spraying things in a production line and causing a, the ability to have a huge fire. It's a handheld thing that, that is tended by a human being that when, and if there is a fire, it, it can be, it can be noted and taken care of. Most of the caution that I read, and this is things that I've read, OSHA and EPA, they all fall into much bigger operations than what we are. We are, we are not a big operation. We've got a handheld device that we're spraying things with. And when it comes to using other chemicals, we're using a spray can like you would buy at the, or anywhere.
But you're putting these into large ovens and baking these chemicals, correct?
Yeah, yeah.
They should abstain.
Yeah, two at a time. But that, none, and again, if you did research on it, you'd find that, that it is environment. The EPA doesn't even concern itself with this, by the way, unless you're sending it up a staff.
Well, again, this is what's listed on the MSDS sheet that you would provide in your application, which is.
Right, right, right.
My position.
Right, right, right. No, and I understand. But I'm, a lot of it also depends on how it's being applied. Is it being applied en masse by robots that are spraying things and, and it's a big production? Or is it just a guy standing there with a little spray gun spraying things? That's what we're doing.
So I'm gonna go around the board and ask anybody, everybody individually, if they have any, any further questions. Ms. Patterson?
I think we've covered pretty much everything I was looking at. My main concern are these chemicals being baked. Everything in these sheets tell you that inhalation of these fumes, that whether you smell them or not, they are there and your, your building is so close to housing, apartment building, that I don't.
I would hope that that's the main objection because that's easily fixed just by doing a test or doing testing. Because you're under the impression that this is spreading harmful fumes and hurting people in the air and it's not.
Mr. Conan? No, I don't have anything, Mark. Ms. Rubble? Oh, Rubble, I'm sorry.
I, I don't have any further questions. I empathize with both your sides, but also to Mr. DeLecky's point about how, say you were granted a special land use permit and your business expands, then we've put you in a position where you're going to get another notice and every business's purpose is to grow. So how, that would be my biggest concern.
You know what happens when a business grows and they ain't got no more room?
They move.
Yeah.
So, yeah. And I, the safety data sheet is concerning. I understand your point about.
The safety data sheet is written by lawyers who are gonna cover their rear on everything to the point that they are scaring and exaggerating you. That, it's like when they, it's like when they test for cancer. They'll take and they'll put huge amounts of some ingredient into rats, way hundred times, thousand times more than, than whatever happened just to produce cancer and say, oh, it's cancer-causing. Yeah, but, but the amount of, the amount that you do is unrealistic. They're just trying to prove that it, that it can do it. And the same thing is true with this. I don't know, and like I said, Park Electric is doing it right now, by the way. Okay? So, the, if you go to other shops, other powder coating shops, there's a few long growth spec and whatnot. They, if they were sending things, fumes up into the air, there's businesses nearby, people go work there, they're there every darn day. Okay, so whether it's a house or whether it's a business, there's people within that. The EPA is not concerned that this is such a hazard that it needs to be regulated by them.
Just, just the point. I don't think we should, in our decision here, that we should be projecting a growth rate for him. But I think we should be looking at what he's doing, what he wants to do. But I still go along with what Christie said about, you know, we don't know the effects of these chemicals. They say some are carcinogenic, you know.
And the regulations are poison.
Yeah, well, so is a gas station, for crying out loud. You pump gas and you get fumes. It, it would be the same, the same probability of getting sick.
Yeah, no, no, I think we can compare with other powder coating shops. Like they have, they have some pretty big ones over there on.
That's.
Over there by Rose Backtown.
Yeah, there's one in Mount Clemens, yeah.
Yeah. Actually, guys aren't made of homes that.
Yeah, okay, all right.
Right down there from the high school.
All right.
It's also an industrial.
Yeah, it's industrial.
Yeah, right.
It's, that's not, right, right. We gotta keep with, with the subject at hand.
Right, right, but I'm just trying to, to say that, that the fumes and the smell and the, all these things, I don't know where.
You know, Mark, you get, you gotta, you know, it's like the governor always says, she only does it by science. Except she don't like to show you the science.
I am doing it by science.
You need to show the science then.
I did. I, I gave you the materials there. It doesn't say that you should not use the stuff because it's, it might cause something bad. You have to talk about how it's applied. It's not applied in the quantities and in a manner that is going to cause things that you're concerned about. If that were true, paint shops and bump shops and all of them would be, cause they're way more fumey and hazardous than this powder coating.
That's why they have paint booths and filters and all that.
And it sends it up a stack into the public.
Mr. Keating, can you give us any insight on, you know, what does he need to do to get this approved? How to see, or can't he?
Well, I can't move the building.
You read the memorandum, right?
Pardon?
You've read that, right?
Yes, yes, I did.
I don't think there's a remedy that can be done to bring this use into compliance with the ordinance. I don't see it. There's a reason that these uses are specifically intended for the industrial district. It's so that they're not close to residential and regardless of whether we have the specifics of the fumes or whether we have decibel readings, you know, we don't have that specific information. But to me, it doesn't matter. I can still see that the ordinance doesn't want this particular use in this location.
The ordinance is written for the protection of the surrounding area.
It's also written for zoning, Mark.
Okay, well, but zoning is for the protection of, well, more protect. Zoning is also trying to promote a business district and a retail district. And I understand all that. But that's the, are the argument I wanted to bring, that you, you're expecting way too much if you're thinking that you're gonna create a Frankenmuth-type situation here. You need to utilize buildings for a purpose and, and allow the owners to collect money so they can pay their taxes on the businesses that are already here. And I am one, and that building is already here and it's been here and I, and I didn't build it. And it is a dyed-in-the-wool industrial building. And, and this idea that your, your rules say that you can't use the building from what it was built for, I've been doing that for years, for 35 years. And he keeps talking about a fab shop. To me, a fab shop is just another activity that's in a commercial, or a industrial building. That, to me, a fab shop is just another activity that's in a, a commer, or a industrial building. It's been used as an industrial building. Uh, I've, I've, the things that were bad about an industrial building, noise, smell, neither of those are present here. And she's bringing up, well, but the people inside them are all gonna die of cancer or something. Uh, that's an exaggeration.
That's not what was said.
That's an exaggeration, but that's, that's the, the ultimate end result is that.
It's not, it's not what was said at all, so let, let's keep what was said.
Okay, then, then what was implied?
Let's not interject anything. So if I can, Kevin, do you have any, Mr. Grant, do you have anything?
Uh, I do now, sir.
Okay, so um, my thing, I stated, so I'm not really gonna state anything other than the fab shop utilizes a lot of outside activity, which does not constitute a usage, as Mr. Casey said, in this area. No matter what the applicant says, there has been outside storage and outside usage of that since that, since we became aware of that building, so it's, so at this point in time, I'm gonna ask for a motion either to table, approve, or deny.
If I can add, you should do one motion for the special land use and one for the site plan.
So we have to, okay.
Do it in two seconds.
So which would we do first, the special approval?
Uh, I would do the special approval and that will dictate whether or not the use is one that can be considered for the site plan.
Okay. So that being said, anybody care to make a motion on the special approval land use?
I'll make a motion to deny the special approval land use for the property located at 74130 Fulton.
So do we have a second on the denial on the special approval land use?
I'll second that.
All in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? So the special approval land use has been denied unanimously. So now a motion on the site plan. What, what do you want on the site plan?
So I'll just, I'll just clarify. So you've got, in the ordinance, you've got a special land use appro, special approval land use and a site plan. And so by saying you're not permitting the use, the site plan for that use uh, should likely not be permitted also. So you're, you're finding that the documents that you have um, won't comply with the ordinance cause it doesn't have permission to do that use in the plan.
So that you're uh, denying the site plan or?
Correct.
That would be the logical thing to do since you already denied the special approval.
Okay, I'll make it then. I'll make a notion, this will be to deny the site plan for the property located at 74130 Fulton.
Second? Duly noted? Second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Deny, we'll give you uh, a written explanation as to the denials.
And in this denial, what is my next step to uh, to overturning that? Because.
You could go to the zoning board of appeals.
And where's that?
Here.
With the same people that got?
The zoning board of appeals. Your board of planning commission to currently leave this evening. So the zoning board of appeals is a different board.
Oh, okay, different people, right?
Different board, different people, correct. Somebody, somebody on this board also sits on that board.
Okay.
Christie.
I don't think so.
No?
You said that?
Yeah.
Well, she's one of the ones that made, uh, from what I gather, from what I heard, the, it seems that what set off the denial was this fear of, of uh, uh, cancer causing things in the air.
I think you heard what you wanted to hear. The real thing is that it didn't fit. So does the planner produce this memorandum, which you have a copy of?
Yeah.
And what did it say in that memorandum?
That's not what she said.
Excuse me.
And that's not what she said.
Excuse me. What did this memorandum say? What did it say?
Well, yeah, right from the get-go. It's not the first time I've been, I've had.
Okay, so what did, what it said was the recommendation was to not approve this uh,
Right.
this operation, this business at this locale.
Not the first time that happened.
We're not talking about anything other than tonight.
Right.
This is what was recommended. It had nothing to do with, it was, it was all about zoning, Mark.
But when you own a building, you have to go by your history at, it, on the building and, and, and how it might be uh, predictable uh, for the future.
There's many uses that could be, be approved for that building. This just isn't one.
Again, I just told you about the other uses that you seem to think I'm gonna be making a killing renting this thing out for these other uses. They don't, it does not work. That building, if the village wants to buy that from me, uh, uh, they need to put up or shut up. Because if they're gonna deny me the ability to make money and pay my taxes on a building, uh, then they need to be, uh, have the power to be able to say, we will buy it from you.
If I can, you're, you asked what your next steps are.
Yes.
So the planning commission uh, denied your special approval land use and they denied your site plan. So your next uh, option you have is to file an appeal with the zoning board of appeals.
Oh, I'm going to do that.
So um, the, the folks here in the office can help provide you that application, um, and it will be. It'll be, it'll be a similar process to what it is tonight.
The same people.
Well, what you heard is.
And the same objections which are unfounded, then I'm, I'm sunk.
I'm just telling you what your.
Yeah, yeah, no, I'm glad you did. I'm, right.
You know.
So how do I do that? How do I go to this zoning board of appeals?
So it's an application that you'll fill out um, through the village hall here. Uh, you'll go through, actually, it's a similar process. The state of Michigan has the same public hearing notice process. So the same people who are notified that there is a hearing tonight uh, will be notified that you're appealing the decision of, of the planning commission.
Okay.
Okay, and then the zoning board has a separate set of standards that they use to say, did the planning commission act appropriately tonight?
Yeah.
And that's what you're appealing, not, not the specific standards of the ordinance, but did the planning commission make their determinations based on the ordinance? And if the answer.
Well, they did make it based on the ordinance, uh, but.
That's all we can do, Mr. Grant. That's all it was, based on the ordinance. That's, that's our.
Right, right.
That is our job, just as a welding shop, fab shop is to, to do a certain operation. This is our operation, that's our guideline.
Right, right. No, I understand that.
Okay, then if you understand that, then.
I have a few objections. One of them is your description of what's going to happen if that fab shop is allowed to exist. And the other objection I have is her, uh, no matter what you say, she was talking about uh, fumes and the powder and she says, I, it doesn't even, even if I can't smell it, it exists. She said that. I didn't make this up.
Your own, your own statement that you said, uh, Mr. Grant read the EPA statements of that. You're, you're, you're refuting EPA statements. We, we, we can't do this. This, this meeting and, and your approval thing is, is, is over at this point in time. We've denied you.
That's fine. I just want you to know my objection.
Well, we, we understand. Your objection is duly noted and we've, we've discussed this quite in length. I hope that we had explained ourselves thoroughly enough to, for you to understand our position.
And.
Apparently that's not true.
And I also object to your accusation that I knew and I did it, I, I knew and should have come to you. No, I was the owner. It was an industrial building. I assumed that I am still the owner and I'm still operating as an industrial when I bought it before you set up your C2 and C1 and all that. When I bought the building, I bought it before all that came into effect. So anyway, if it's ended, then I will go to zoning board of appeals and, and do those sorts of things. And I don't know, I wanna see how much money that's going to cost. Because I don't think that based on my uh, uh, the day I bought the building and the way the building was, was uh, zoned and, and how I was to understand it, that, no, I wasn't trying to be a, uh, do something sneaky. I wasn't trying to look for trouble for myself, that's true. But I wasn't doing anything that I didn't think that should be allowed because of when I bought it and all that.
We've had a long history of you having different people occupy that building and you knew that every time somebody came in.
But I'm still the owner. I still was the one in charge.
Okay, 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 okay.
Okay.
Enough said. So your option is to uh, come in or not come in for a zoning board of appeals.
I do, I do want, so how do I get this application?
Come into the village office.
And see her again?
Yep.
Okay, I can do that. I can do that. That'll get me started.
Thank you, Mr. Ezo. Good night.
All right.
Okay, so there's no other people in the audience, so a public conference is uh, classed over. So chair report. So um, there is a DDA check um, that got issued in the amount of um, twenty-five thousand, five hundred, eleven dollars and twenty-five cents to the Bank of New York Mullen Trust. So, and that was our. Excuse me?
Principal and interest.
Yeah, the principal was twenty thousand and the interest was five thousand, five hundred, eleven dollars and twenty-five cents for the total of the twenty-five, twenty-five, eleven point two five. So um, with that being said, so then uh, the other part of the chair report, Mr. Ezo and I had many meetings prior to this meeting, um, preparing, trying to get the application as uh, detailed and correct as we could, so that's all I've got at present. Motion to adjourn if nothing else?
I'll, so move. I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, good night all.
Thanks, Mr. Casey for.